Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Corangelo.
Present.
Mrs. Chu. Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwos.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
And President Lax.
Here. We have a quorum. Please rise and salute the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law is enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purposes. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules.
Good evening and welcome. We are going to start this evening with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Lax, and good evening, everyone. On Thursday, March 3rd, Dr. Shavar Danish, chairman of neurosurgery of the Jersey Shore University Medical Center, treated our students in the Waxman program to a truly unique experience that provided career education and insight into the medical field. Dr. Danish brought three technicians from the surgical field, along with surgical equipment and materials used to train medical students. The event started with a presentation that included images of tumors, data on experimental trials, and images of groundbreaking procedures that Dr. Danish and his team developed. This presentation gave a firsthand account of the scientific processes applied to the medical field. Additionally, Dr. Danish gave valuable information regarding the steps necessary to enter the field of medicine and science. Students were then provided the opportunity to use training equipment for, believe it or not, setting screws in the spine, tools for hip surgery, and a tool for cutting bone and tissue during brain surgery. All of those things I can use later in life. This was a memorable and motivating experience for all students involved, and we'd like to thank Dr. Danish and advisor Ann Sinelli for coordinating this event. On Wednesday, March 9th, at Hammershold Middle School, we welcomed K-12 English-language learners and their families for the third ESL literacy night of the academic school year. The spring-themed ESL literacy night, "Bloom Into Your Best Self", focused on building effective social-emotional learning strategies. District ESL teachers designed stations for K-7 students, complete with multiple interactive activities related to social and emotional growth. Students created inspirational spring-themed crafts, read and listened to stories promoting self-confidence and affirmation, and concluded the evening with yoga and breathing technique practices. Again, things I can use. Grades 8 through 12 ESL students focused on college and career readiness. These students received a presentation through Naviance that focused on collecting information about their goals, interests, motivations, and strengths. Students completed online surveys that assisted aligning strengths with interest to post-secondary goals, improving goal outcomes, and connecting learning to their lives. Six Warrenstorfer fifth graders and their teacher-advisors competed in the NJIT ESTEM competition in Jersey City on Monday, March 14th. Students worked through the engineering process to design, create, test, and improve a vehicle prototype that traveled completely on wind energy. Under the guidance of their advisors and an NJIT graduate student, our group named themselves the Warrenstorfer STEM-Pied and worked on the project for eight weeks. And the hard work paid off as they earned third place out of 30 schools in the engineering logbook category of the competition. The East Brunswick community is very proud of our students as they became the first elementary-age students from an EB school to participate in a university-sponsored STEM competition. The six members of the Warrenstorfer STEM-Pied are Arjun Desai, Mia Jen, Maddie Mellinger, Yuge Patel, Harry Rubenstein, and Evelyn Johannan. Their teacher-advisors are Kelly Stalling and Joanne Janczek. This month, the kindergarten classes at Frost Elementary School ended their unit on narrative writing with an author's parade. Over the whole writing unit, the kindergarteners learned about telling and writing true stories. They learned how to make writing easy to read and wrote many books, and chose their best work for publishing. To celebrate this amazing accomplishment, they held an author's parade where the entire Frost community came out of their classes to congratulate and celebrate our young authors. It was a momentous occasion. The kindergarteners were so proud of their books, and it showed, and we hope this is the beginning of their excitement and love of writing. The third-grade students at Memorial Elementary, along with the support of teachers Teresa Mori Ali, Sharon Harrington, and Taylor Venice, held a Peace for Paws fundraiser. All donations were dropped off at the Woodbridge Animal Shelter, Pet Adoption Center, and Rescue Ridge this month. And thank you to Christopher Kapinos, one of our school's security officers, for dropping the donations off. Tonight, select students from the high school drama club will perform a scene from Little Women: The Musical. The last two days to see this amazing performance are on Friday, March 18th, and Saturday, March 19th. Both performances begin at 7:00 p.m. Tickets are available online at ebhsdrama.org. On Monday, March 21st, we will host our 13th Annual Night of Jazz, sponsored by the East Brunswick Education Foundation. The event will take place at the Joanne Magistral Performing Arts Center at Hammershold Middle School, and it will begin at 6:30 p.m. Tickets may be purchased at the door. Parent-teacher conferences will be held Tuesday, March 22nd through Friday, March 25th. These are single-session days for students. Lunch will be served in grades K through 7. Parent-teacher conferences are an excellent way to stay involved in your child's education. And just a side note, this year, we did continue parent-teacher conferences in a virtualized environment. We did make the planning for parent-teacher conferences early in the school year when we did not know that we would be in this certain situation. But we do intend to return to face-to-face conferences for next school year. The East Brunswick Education Foundation's Partner in Excellence Dinner will be held on Tuesday, April 5th, at the Pines Manor in Edison. The East Brunswick Education Foundation trustees will honor Dr. Trudy Atkins, Dr. Anna Braun, Lisa Citron, and David Lonsky Esquire. In addition, the EBEF will be celebrating the Alumni Hall of Fame induction of Dr. Scott Gottlieb, former head of the FDA, and Olympian Sam Mattis. For ticket information, please visit ebef.org. And finally, so our East Brunswick families may begin to plan. If, and I use the word "if", we do not use an emergency closing day by Friday, April 1st, then Monday, April 18th, which is the Monday after our scheduled spring break, that will be a non-school, non-work day for students and 10-month staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Ends on a good note. Yes, so very exciting. And I want you to know, and I apologize because we have such diligent students here this evening, but I thought it was important that you come tonight because I want everyone that has not seen you yet this weekend to go. So...
We have Michelle Degrosa, who is the supervisor of arts, who's going to make the introductions.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Valeski. Good evening. My name's Michelle Degrosa. I'm the supervisor of arts education with East Brunswick. And as Dr. Valeski alluded to, we had three extremely successful performances of Little Women: The Musical. I sat in the back and cried through one of them because it was so amazing, honestly. And we have two more coming up this weekend. So we are joined here by some special guests for a sneak preview. But before they begin, I wanted to introduce you the high school choral teacher and music director of the musical, Mr. Adam Goode. And to introduce the students this evening, the director of our musical and theater high school teacher, Mr. Jeffrey Davis.
I'm going to go around.
Hi. So we had our first show without masks, and it was extraordinary. And it means more to me and to, I think, the kids than I think we maybe knew to be performing in a normal way again. And I was so extremely proud of them, and they did a great job. You have two more chances to see it. If you haven't seen it, please come. They're great. Tonight, we're going to be doing the song "Five Forever" for everybody. And our students are playing Amy March is Maddie Blaustein, playing Joe March Alexandra Corallo, Beth March Kira Marcus. I like to torment her by mispronouncing her last name, but I didn't do it tonight, Marquez. Schloke Pathic is Lori, Theodore Lawrence III, and Celia Schmider will be Meg March.
And we're going to go around so that we can truly enjoy.
Break this time out.
I want to declare before everyone, before the world, that on this day of forgiveness and joy, that you, Theodore Lawrence III, who has validly lost all contest to me, I declare you our brother, the brother we never had. Swear to us your greatest oath of loyalty, an oath as dazzling as your charm.
I swear I'll follow you like royalty.
Come wear our royal coat of arms.
From now on, we are joined, and we shall not be parted. From this day on, it's all for one, and one for all for life.
We'll live like musketeers.
Together we'll prevail.
We'll be five for all forever from now on.
Now each of us must swear for all eternity. Our bond shall never be undyed.
Nothing shall sever this fraternity.
We'll always live and die as one.
From now on, we are joined, and we shall not be parted.
From this day on, it's all for one, and one for all for life.
Together we will fight.
Your battles will be mine.
We'll be five for all forever from now on.
Speed!
On this wonderful day.
Wonderful!
Forever, yes!
I am honored to say I am yours!
From this day on, we swear that we shall not be parted.
From this day on, no matter what, we're five for all for life.
We'll conquer every foe.
With our brother by our side.
If John were here, he'd be our brother too.
Meg's in love.
We'll consider any friend.
We'll be loyal to the end.
We'll be five for all forever.
We'll be five for all forever.
We'll be five for all forever from now on.
And on, and on.
From now on.
Thank you so much. That is awesome, especially coming off what we've all been through. And I thank Lori Lax for saying, "Get this done, bring them in here", because that was phenomenal.
And if you think that was good, and it was, that's much better things out there. We should do all of them, see? Do you know how we would pack this meeting? Do you know what that's burning? I thought we were that good. We're not.
We were good. Thank you so much.
Everybody go buy tickets. I know, tough act to follow. I'm so sorry, Joe. Thank you. I'm like giddy. I'm telling you. I know, I feel really bad for Joe.
Joe's actually smiling.
Joe is smiling. Joe, if we set it to music, it'll go over much better.
Before they begin, so we have Joe Kropczfeld, our director of financial services, who is going to introduce our report from the fiscal year ending 2021. He's going to be doing so with a solo.
Yes.
And then we have Scott Cleland from our auditing firm, Whissin Company, who will be reporting on the results of the audit. Certainly, nothing as exciting as what we just saw.
Put it to music.
I'm going to sing back.
That's all I ask.
So, first off, thanks for having me. Second off, I don't know what I did to Dr. Valeski to arrange every time I do a presentation there's an outstanding performance. I believe the last time was elementary age, and like, the crowd was crying, and I have to come up here. Yeah, so correct me if I'm wrong. This is the first student presentation since COVID. So you got the excitement now. I'll put you to sleep. All right, so it's the FY 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Just, we're closer to the end of this school year. Just everything we're talking about was related to last school year that ended June 30th, 2001. For the eighth consecutive year, we were awarded the certification by the Association of School Business Officials International for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The audit is made up of four main funds. Governmental funds, the general fund, which we had $186 million worth of expenditures. Special revenue, which we had $11.6 million. Capital projects, $451,000, and debt service of $6.6 million. I'll go briefly through each fund. And the general fund deals with the day-to-day operations of the district. There is definitely a delay. Sorry. We had fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2021, of $24.7 million, made up of $8 million for the capital reserve. We put money into that capital reserve so we can do various projects throughout the district: paving, roofing, HVAC, those type items. $2.1 million was reserved for encumbrances. Those are open purchase orders that are, we're still waiting for shipments, open construction orders that are out there as of the end of the year. $8.2 million for legally required for the state of New Jersey. It's important to note, in prior years, it was 2%. The state made an optional reserve requirement of 4% that for financial reporting, we have to report at the 4%. $4.3 million applied to tax relief for the 2021 year. The same amount, $4.3, reserved for the current school year. And there was an additional $300,000 budgeted to offset taxes in the current school year. And then, a new reporting aspect for 2021. We had unemployment compensation that used to be reported in another fund, is now reported on the general fund. We had an ending balance of $438,000. Special revenue fund. I'll explain it besides the definition. To me, the special revenue fund, it's grants, gifts, special funding, everything that has strings attached to it. I like to refer to it as. It could be money for special education, for basic skills from the Ed Foundation, from PTAs for specific purposes. We might need new batteries, Karen, going forward. Major grants awarded in 2021. IDEA, $2 million, it was an increase of $126,000. NCLB, which is all of our title grants, almost $900,000, it decreased by almost 50. EBEF, $15,000. PTA and other, $88,000. The Adult Basic Education Grant, $202,000, which is an increase over the prior years. If you recall, Ms. Gilbert, during her presentation, you know, talked about the success of the Adult Basic Education Program based off of enrollment and also achievement by our students, those adult students. Digital Divide and Coronavirus Relief, $900,000. We had expenditures in the special revenue fund of $11.6 million. Some of the highlights, $400,000, almost $500,000 for EBF, PTA and other, $27,000. The important thing to remember, school was operating differently last year. So a lot of the expenditures for these grants didn't take place as they normally do. So any balances, any money we receive from the PTAs, the EBF, it carries over. So this year, we hope to, you know, do more things with those grants to get, you know, that money into the classrooms for those specific purposes. We had $4.4 million for federal. That would be your IDA, your NCLB. Grants, state, $248,000. And then other, $6.4, almost $6.5 million. The other is comprised of the inter-local service agreements that we do and the special lease-purchase financing that we do. Capital projects. Used to account for all the capital facilities, the construction, capital assets. Total expenditures of $450,000. That's a decrease from prior year. The vast majority of those expenditures related to the Energy Savings Initiative program. Debt service. Used to account for our bonds, principal and interest. We like to refer to it as our mortgage payment. It's similar to, you know, when you buy a house and you have a mortgage. The balance as of June 30th, 2021. I am sorry. Can I use the keyboard? Thank you.
It's because you didn't sing.
If I sung, this room would be empty and nothing would work. All right, we had bonds payable as of June 30th of $65.4 million, comprised of four main issues. The 2012 refunding bonds, that was refunded from the 2005 issue. There's $46.5 million left in that. 2017 refunding of the 2007 issue, there's a million left with that. 2020 refunding of the 2010, there's $10 million left on that. And then the Energy Savings Improvement Program, which is accounted for in the general fund, but listed for the purposes of outstanding debt here of $7.7 million. Our debt limit is 4% of the average annualized equal... I'm sorry, average equalized value. The current debt limit is $305 million, almost $306. Our net debt is $75 million. That represents 24.5% of the debt limit. Our debt margin is $230 million. So as of June 30th, we could go out for additional bonds of $230 million. Enterprise funds, just as I go through the next several slides over the enterprise, I will spend a little bit of time talking about how the pandemic impacted our enterprises. As you're aware, you know, we have three major enterprise funds: child nutrition community programs and facilities rentals. The pandemic impacted each one differently. Start with the child nutrition. We had total operating revenues of $31,000, which is pre-pandemic, extremely low. The reason why? All meals were free, so students did not have to purchase meals. That caused an increase in our non-operating revenue to go to $3 million. We had operating expenses of $2.9. As a result, a change in net position or retained earnings of $205,000. This is a major increase over the prior year when we had a loss in this fund of approximately $25,000. So it's important to note that several years ago, probably like 10 years ago, our child nutrition program was losing money to the point where the general fund had to cover the deficit. Over a four-year period, the general fund covered almost $1.3 million in deficit. Because of that, the board, the district, came up with a plan to make changes. We outsourced management, changed how we operate, made significant changes, and we also made investment into the program. That allowed us, pre-pandemic, to have positive returns and have retained earnings, fund balance, as we most commonly call in a school district, to allow us to lose that money last year, you know, two years ago, and then recover this past year. So, you know, I really think the board, the child nutrition staff, Aramark, who is the management company, Evicate, our consultant, should really be commended for making those changes to allow us to survive the child nutrition program through the pandemic. So, one of the benefits of meals being free, we were distributing meals last year. We served over a million meals, which, you know, if you think about that number over, you know, a year, that's significant. I mean, under non-ideal conditions. So, you know, kudos again to the board for supporting that, for the staff, and just making it happen for the community. Community Programs is the next fund. We had total revenues of $863,000. Community Programs is comprised of early morning after-school, the Early Learning Academy, and other, which are enrichments, the various enrichment programs that we do throughout the district. We had total expenditures of $1.8 million. So we lost almost $1 million last year. That's on top of over $300,000 we lost the year before. This fund usually transfers over and helps support the general fund to the tune of about $1 million a year. So, over a two-year period, we lost $1.3 million. Again, if the board wasn't supportive in, you know, what we do on the enterprise fund, this program would not exist anymore because by law, we cannot have a program that requires a general fund support. So, just to refresh everybody's memory, before the pandemic, we were doing well. The finance department came to the board and recommended that we keep a reasonable, healthy balance in the community programs fund. God forbid anything happened. I don't think anybody in their wildest dreams thought of pandemic and what we've been through. The board supported that, thankfully, because we were, again, allowed to ride it out. And because of that, we're seeing positive returns now. You know, I think we've turned the corner. Enrollment's starting to go up. We're seeing, you know, making money on a monthly basis, which is a really good thing. Plus, I really believe we provide an excellent service to the community for what we charge parents. The last enterprise, facilities rental. Total revenues of $2,000, expenditures of $24,000. We lost $22,000. We stopped renting our facilities for two years. But we didn't forget about facilities rental. I'm proud to report, at the beginning of March, we had our first dance competition at JM Pack, and we've had another one since. And starting next weekend, I think we're booked until the end of time. We are literally beating people away who want into our facilities. So we expect, as of June 30th this year, a really nice return. That's credit to Chetna, who's in the office, in the audience, I'm sorry. She's done a really great job. So fortunately, we were not able to transfer anything to the general fund, but we'll be all right. So financial facts, we had $303 million of inflows, $299 million in outflows. We ended the year with $47 million on hand. Now, that's a lot of money, right? Now, that's a lot of money, right? But when you're talking about an operation that, you know, has $300 million in and out, that's a healthy balance considering the timing of when we pay bills. You know, we've set up a system that benefits the district to retain cash on hand, to maximize investments and interest return and secure cash flow. We are lucky. There are districts that do not have that ability and have to take loans out at the end of the year in order to make payroll. So, again, good financial management, in my opinion. Other financial facts, manage over 25 bank accounts, maintain compliance with quarterly filings, issue approximately 2,200 W-2s and 1099s, process 650 journal entries, process 7,300 club and activity and field trip registrations, process 1,500 athletic and band registrations, over 1,000 before and after-school program registrations, over 800 after-school enrichment registrations, put out over $6,500, 6,500 purchase orders, 18,000 invoices have been processed, 5,000 accounts payable checks issued, 37,000 paychecks. They're not all live paychecks, most of them are direct deposit. 12,000 timesheets, 10,000 attendance slips, whether paper or electronic, bids and renewals, requests for formal quotes, student service providers. So, all that leads, in my opinion, to our success, you know, we're successful here, in my opinion. But why? Why are we successful? So, I truly believe, you know, speaking as the Director of Financial Services, specifically about my departments, we have a "we" mentality. The "we" is over me. One person, including myself, does not make us successful. You know, I would love to stand up here, "Oh, it's me." No. It's some of the ladies in the audience, including Mike.
Actually, Joe, could you have them stand up and just...
So, Randy Margolin is the Senior Manager of Payroll and Benefits. Lori Taggart is the Purchasing Manager. Chetna Mahapatra is soon to be the Facilities Rental Coordinator if it's approved tonight. Tara Rosenbink is the Senior Manager of Accounting. Kathy Rowe is currently the Secretary of Child Nutrition and soon to be Coordinator of Child Nutrition. And then Mike Capobianco is the Director of Food Service for Aramark. So, there's one more slide. So, that "we" concept is not just unique to financial services. I do believe it's something about East Brunswick. All right? And this is a slide I've done in the past. There's many components that make us what we are. Instructional and Support Staff, the administrators, Child Nutrition Community Programs, Facilities Rental, Facilities Management and Transportation, Student Activity and Athletic Funds, Special Education, Student Services and Curriculum Insecurity, Human Resources and Information Technology, Financial Services, the Superintendent, and by all means, the support of the Board of Education. That's what makes us successful. So, with that, I will turn it over to Scott so he can do his piece of the audit.
Thank you. Yep, should be good, let's make sure it moves right. Yep. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you to present my part of the audit. What I first want to mention is that there's no other district that I audit where the Board of Education and the administration gets up before the auditor and gives a presentation like that. I usually go over the numbers. So, it's again, credit to this district and the way they do things that is different from others. I never have a worry about coming into this school district and looking and expecting a bad audit, ever. You have a tremendous superintendent and a supportive board. Bernie and Tara and Joe do a great job supervising the administration. You should be very pleased to have them on board because they're very professional. We spend a lot of time in meetings together. We get a lot of things done and we're very honest with each other, and I appreciate that. And again, the team that you have together here is very, very strong and keeps you kind of rolling along as you have over the past couple of years and since I can remember. So, you know, before I get into some of my overview, you really do have a very, very good community here and a very good business office and a very, very good administration. Probably one of the best in the state that I have ever dealt with. And again, I think you should give Joe a lot of credit because most people can't get up there and do that. Want to stand up? So, Joey did most of what I usually do during a presentation. So, my role tonight is just to kind of give you an overview of what we do during the audit process and talk about why we are giving this presentation in March when the audit is as of June 30th, 2021. So, every year, it seems to get a little bit later. Nothing on your administrator's part, nothing on my part. It all comes down to the state has been unable to provide any of the firms or any of the districts information regarding pensions and your retiree, state retiree benefit programs, where the audits get later and later by the Department of, Division of Pensions. So, this year, the audit was due December 5th. The state came out and changed, and actually, the legislature changed the regulation to February 5th and then realized it wasn't even going to get done then and moved it to March 15th. So, through all of that, your audit got filed on time, except for we don't want to be sitting here nine months into your fiscal year and talking about what happened last year because it doesn't give you much time to plan. So, the good news is we stay in touch with each other and talk about what's going on going forward. And again, nothing to do with your administration, but we don't want to be here. We'd like to be here in December in the future to get this thing wrapped up. Talk a little bit about your staff and the recognition that they do deserve. The audit is not just the numbers you see in that report. We touch on a lot of different areas. We look at your enrollment. We look at your, your DRTRS, which is your transportation students. We look at general and school administration, instruction, student services, transportation, student operations, support operations, enterprise funds, your self-insurance fund. So, we're here quite a bit. We look at a lot of different areas, and we look at not only the numbers, we're looking at controls and compliance. And Joe had noted when he went over to Special Revenue Fund, that one thing you had come up this year is that in every school district, you receive the same thing, a lot of money through CARES Act. Well, that put another onus on us to test those programs. So, through our testing of compliance and internal controls, we're happy to report that we did not identify any areas where there were weaknesses identified or items that were purchased did not comply with the requirements. You know, our fear is that the federal government's going to send people into districts. I know Newark, one of my clients, got a call today that the Inspector General's coming in already because there gets such a large number, they're going to, they're going to look at some of the CARES Act money, more so the higher-level districts that received a lot of money. So, what is our objective during the audit? We have to look at certain information and be comfortable that what we've looked at meets the requirements for us to render an opinion. And then we express an opinion, and the opinion on this year's audit is unmodified. It's a clean opinion. What I would expect in this district means that everything that we requested from the business office and any other department was provided to us, was accurate, and did not result in us in having any, any journal entries. You do a very, very good job from that aspect as well. So, again, a clean opinion. We also look at controls over payroll, purchasing, accounts payable, cash receipts and various other areas, and then we would have to report on whether we had any identified findings. I'm happy to report, again, we did not have any findings this year in terms of our testing of all the different departments and all the different transactions. We also, as part of our requirement, have to test your federal and state grants. So, this year, as I mentioned, we tested the Digital Divide and the Corona, the CRF funds, as well as your IDA program. And again, I'm happy to report that we did not identify anything in those areas that were questionable. The audit is done in accordance with our required auditing standards, government auditing standards. Federal uniform guidance is the federal requirements that we have to look at your grants, and NJOMB Circular 15-08 would be the state requirements to look at your state programs. The CAFR is broken into four sections. The introductory section is really your, your part of the audit. It's a transmittal letter. It's the organizational chart. It's your Certificate of Excellence. The financial section is where most of the meat of the audit is in terms of the numbers we audited. The statistical section is 20 different schedules. It talks about tax rate, 10 highest taxpayers, and just some general information about the community. And then the single audit section is where you would find all the information that relates to all the grants. Audit results, clean opinion, unmodified. District is in a very strong financial position, as Joe laid out. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or other matters in our, in our testing. No, no issues with the grants. Again, an unmodified opinion on compliance, and no findings in our 2021 management report. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight.
Thank you for being here. And you are too modest, Joe, as is Bernie, because your department did have the forward thinking to put us in the position we're in. And I know that you thank the board, and we do have a very good board, I will say, sitting here, but what you guys do year after year, and when you come in here and tell us this, it's no surprise, but I appreciate that. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Mark?
Yeah. Well, Larry, you mentioned something about the pension board. Does this, does that cover that in here? I didn't see that in here. Like, do they check references to the pension board contributions, things like that?
There's a footnote six and seven, I believe it is. There's like 20 pages on pensions, I mean, the bigger report.
Gotcha.
There's a whole section on PERS and TPAF, and then there's also the post-retirement benefit section, which is a state retiree benefit program. All the amounts that would be your liabilities in that section, that if you were to close shop today, that's how much you would owe. But keep in mind, annually, TPAF is already picked up and covered by the state entirely. PERS is your responsibility to make an annual payment, which is made, I think, by April 1st of each year, somewhere around there. So, there is a big section in there. And really, what it comes down to is when the requirements came into play, I think the pension was like six years ago, and the retirement program was required to be included in the audit about two or three years ago. It threw a lot of onus on the State Division of Pensions to have an actuary come in and break all of it out into individual communities, where in the past, the audit was just one number. When the new regulation came out, they had to now go in and say, from an actuarial perspective, we have, what, 500-plus school districts, 500-plus municipalities, we have authorities, counties. They now had to go in and break them out to what share of that liability is each community's. And it comes about like 0.055%, small pieces of each of the communities, but now they had to figure that all out and break it all out. Why it keeps getting later and later every year, I can't figure that one out. You know, it could be the pandemic, but we're getting later and later every year, and it's, we need to get these things on a more timely basis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So, can I ask a question for Joe to answer? So, I'm sorry to call you up. So, on your slide, page number three, so there is unemployment compensation. Are all employees covered by unemployment insurance?
So, school districts typically do not participate in the state unemployment plan. We have to retain, you know, we have a deduction just like the regular, you know, if you're working for Kohl's or Home Depot, it's the same amount that comes out. We retain 0.325 of that 0.425, I believe, in the reserve that we maintain. The balance goes to the state, and then the state bills us on a quarterly basis, and we pay out. There are times, back in 2010, there wasn't enough money in the reserve, so we had to fund it out of the General Fund. We have, you know, it's $450,000, I believe, in that reserve right now, as of June 30th. That's a decent amount, considering our payroll is $100 million a year. So, you're talking about a half a percent of the payroll that we maintain in there. So, we always analyze it during budget time to make sure, you know, do we have to fund it more as the employer? But we're okay based off of our, our analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I thank you two gentlemen for being the two that were up here. The reason I wanted you all to stand before, because I do realize Joe was right, the "we" is all of you. So, I think I commend you all. And my pun for the evening is even though you didn't sing, it was music to our ears. How's that? See? There you go.
That's a mic drop right there.
Yeah, I know. I wish I were that cool. Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you again. And now, you get to follow that, see? Everybody's got to follow somebody, and you have to outdo the last one because everything's been so good tonight. Bernie's not going to sing. But we'll be music to our ears.
So, I wanted to do things just one step different tonight. Normally, Bernie would come up here and start presenting the budget, tentative budget for the board's approval and for the public's hearing. But this year's been so different. And the thing I wanted to say is really what you've heard so far already is about this budget tonight that Bernie is about to present was built on foundations that were created many years ago. This isn't just one-year preparation. There are decisions that this board has supported over my entire tenure that have led us to this position and not knowing what our state aid number was going to be until it was released by the, by the governor's office, and our preparation, Bernie's preparation, the finance office preparation, to make sure that we could have made that a balanced budget, no matter what the outcome at the state level. So, that's, that is, that preparation is a great credit to the Board of Education, who has been extremely supportive over the years about initiatives we've recommended, about programs we've recommended, about the way that we structure our school district. And then here tonight, the representatives representing our professional organizations, PSA, EBEA, those relationships are critical to making sure that our organization runs and we can do it effectively within the financial resources that we have. And then that planning and preparation goes even further. The Finance Department did such a great job with the audit. The people that clean our buildings, the, the administrators who prepared our staff to be able to instruct in an environment before we even knew a pandemic was coming. And then even represented tonight are individuals who are part of our succession planning and thoughtful preparation about people where they are in positions and where they can grow to other positions within the district. And so, for that, I just wanted to say thank you and say this before the community, because this budget is a snapshot of one year of, of work, but it really represents a far greater reach than that. So, thank you. With that, I give you Mr. Giuliani.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. And before I begin, I would be absolutely remiss if I didn't turn to my colleagues here from the Finance Department and thank you personally from the bottom of my heart because you folks are truly the "we" in what we do, and thank you for everything that you do every day. So, we're here to talk about the tentative budget for the 2022-2023 school year, and it's just incredibly hard to believe that we're talking about that at this moment. So, let's begin. And I'd like to begin this evening with talking about the tax levy. And I am just so very pleased to report that for next year, there will be no increase to the General Fund tax levy. Did everyone hear that? There will be no increase to the General Fund tax levy in the 22-23 school year budget.
We need the applause cards.
Right? That is, in, in my 28-plus years here, this is the first time that we've been able to do that. Did everyone hear that? There will be no increase to the general fund tax levy in the 2223 school year budget.
We need the applause cards.
Right? That is, in my 28-plus years here, this is the first time that we've been able to do that. We have an eye on the future as well, because we don't know where things will go in a year or two or three. And so the tax levy that is not being utilized will be banked. We can bank it for up to three years in the event that the state changes course in terms of state aid. So that's kind of the emergency fund. It's that emergency box on the wall, if necessary, down the road. And I have another piece of good news. Our debt service fund, which is the mortgage payment that we budget for each year, that mortgage payment fund will be decreasing on the tax levy by over $1 million for next year. We will see a decrease in school taxes next year. That is a first. And the reason for that with the debt service fund is because the board has been so very supportive. Every time we've come back to the board to say, it's time to refinance the debt. There are opportunities to save money. This reduction is because of that opportunity that we've taken in the past to save money. Payments will be going down, and that's a savings on the interest payment, and ultimately a savings to the taxpayer. And I've said repeatedly over the years, one of the things that's our focus is to do what's best in finances for the taxpayer while supporting what's necessary for our students. So I'm very, very, very pleased to report this. Insofar as our budget next year, our budget will be $179.6 million. That is a 4.27% increase over the current year's base budget. Our tax change, as I mentioned, no tax increase on the general fund. The debt service fund will decrease by over $1 million. And that is a tax decrease, a composite tax decrease of .72, almost .73%. State aid. This chart depicts state aid over a period of time, going back to the fiscal year 2009. There's a lot of information here, but one of the things that's really critical, I think, is, first of all, to note that in 2009 and 2010, our state aid was greater than the state aid in the subsequent 11 years. In the 2009-2010 school years, the state aid was greater than it was in each of the years subsequent to that for 11 years. It's only last year, or I should say in the current fiscal year, that state aid approached where we were. And now we've surpassed where we were in 2009 and 2010. That's a function of the state implementing its own formula for funding schools. With this budget, we will see some of the best class sizes that we have seen in our elementary schools, in grades kindergarten through fourth grade. Our average class sizes will be 17 and 18. That's just a phenomenal accomplishment. And then in terms of budget impacts, where are the cost impacts? We have, of course, our largest impact is in collective bargaining, contractual-based salary commitments, and new staffing, followed by health benefits, our projected net increase there, transportation services, facilities management, charter schools, and insurance. And we have various revenue areas that are offsetting. And so the net is approximately $7.36 million. Now, that's about what the amount of state aid was. And so that takes us to the next chart, which is charter school impact. And approximately, a little over $1 million, I believe was the number. A little over $1 million of that state aid increase is going to the charter school. Not because we want it to, it's because we have to. And what you see on this chart is a depiction of the resources that have been diverted from the school district budget to the charter school since, mostly since 2011 fiscal year up through current. Next year, the charter school will be receiving in excess of $4 million from the school district budget. And next, capital projects. We are proposing in this budget a shared services agreement, as we have done each year, a shared services agreement with the township, where the township facilitates financing for us to be able to accomplish various projects. This is proposed. We still have to come to an agreement with the township on the level of financing that it will support. But it's always been a benefit to the town, because when we finance through the township, the school district enjoys a superior interest rate that is much lower than what would be garnered on the open market. So that's the reason why we go through a shared services agreement. And hopefully, that will be the case for this next year. What's incorporated into the proposed shared services agreement is some paving, curbing, and sidewalk replacements at designated areas around the district. HVAC systems will be completed at Chittick, Frost, Irwin, and Warrensdorfer School. Those buildings had major HVAC projects conducted in those facilities several years ago. This is the last component that will bring those to finalization. With our temporary classroom units, now the board had approved the acquisition of temporary classroom units, and we have the funds in the budget to do so. Our first payment is not due until the project is complete. And that will be paid over a period of five years. But on looking at what our rates could be through a shared services agreement, if we were to instead finance that project through a shared services agreement, the result would be an interest savings of somewhere between $200,000 and $400,000 over the term. So we're not talking about potatoes here. We're talking about real money. And so whenever those opportunities arise, we need to take advantage of them. And so that's one. Next, we have the old maintenance yard located on Cranberry Road, which requires demolition and remediation. And so that's part of this budget, so that we can finally accomplish that project. And lastly, Phase Three of the athletic complex, which will bring a girls' varsity and JV softball and field hockey fields up at the high school complex. This is the third phase of a project that was begun over 10 years ago. And the first phase was with the complete redo of the stadium field and track. The second phase was the creation of new fields directly across from the stadium, which include the varsity and junior varsity baseball, and the natural turf and artificial turf fields. And the third phase is with this one that we are recommending to go forward. This was on the plan, and I wanted to show you what the location would be. This is a, this is a image of the high school site. And the location for the Phase Three is in the lower, lower left-hand side of the site. And we'll zoom in on that. And you can see this is behind the stadium and below the lower parking lot. This is just an architect's initial rendering, but this would be reflective of the location for the softball fields and the, and the field hockey field. And this is, and I want to caution, this is not a project that will be done this summer. That's not going to happen. I need to make sure everyone understands that. There's planning, there are lots of applications involved. But I would venture to say that for the following summer, we'd have this facility in place. So wrapping this up, we have a couple of key budget dates coming up. Our public hearing on the budget will be May 5th, the final adoption of the budget on May 12th. And lastly, next week, we will be posting the budget data on the district website. There'll be an updated link for user-friendly budget, as well as from the financial services list. Just click on FY 2023 tentative budget, and you can look at the data to your heart's content. And that concludes the presentation on the tentative budget. And I will go into additional details. There'll be a lot more detail that we'll be talking about during the public hearing.
With musical accompaniment, of course.
With musical accompaniment, if you'd like. Perhaps we can get the young ladies who were here this evening to sing.
And the gentlemen. Does anyone have any questions?
Not a question, just a comment that first we had the musical presentation, then we had a clean audit, and then we have a tax, a tax reduction. So I saved some, you know.
It's the luck of the Irish.
Just a quick question. I know we don't have any control over it, but who decides that the charter school gets an extra $1 million this year?
The state. It is by formula. We don't have any choice. And as a matter of fact, the state also decided during the course of this year that they would receive additional money above and beyond what was originally budgeted.
And again, just maybe a follow-up, and I don't expect the answer. I don't know if you have any answer. So 3 million to 4 million, did they increase that many students? Is it the same amount of students? Or is this just something they pick out of the sky and decide to take out of the taxpayers' pockets?
They had an increase in students. I don't read the sign language back 40 stu-, so an increase of 40 students. But, bless you. But also, it's not just the student increase, but they also have a share in what we are seeing with the state aid increase. So it's a combination of both.
Are those 40 students all East Brunswick? Or are there just 40 students, right? Because they've been all over.
The 40 students that we would be charged for would be East Brunswick resident students.
So the increase, okay.
Yes.
And just, I just need to clarify, because this isn't talked about a lot. In addition to the money that we do direct to the charter school, the single charter school in East Brunswick, we also provide transportation services for that charter school. And Joyce Forsberg is responsible for the transportation of those students. And our special education department has to work very closely with that charter school, because when students are returned to us or put into placements, that could become a liability of the district. And so those overlaps continue to exist. So I don't want the community to think that we simply pay the charter school this money, and we have this delineated responsibility. There is a lot of overlap by statute that I disagree with. I'm just going to say publicly, I disagree with it, but we are, we are left with it.
I will supplement that. So what you saw on the chart in terms of the funding that we have to budget for the charter school, that's just a piece of the story, as Dr. Valeski's just remarked on. But I just went into the budget details. Budgeted for next year, $342,000 for transportation services for the charter school. That's on top of the $4 million.
Off of a total budget of what for transportation? So I'm curious on the percentage of that take compared to the overall.
$342,000. Now, you have to, in this case, you have to look at the type of services. So these are regular education, transportation, so $342,000 out of $2.5 million.
Do you have a question, Mark?
In regards to the softball field, with the new high school possibly coming, is that softball field area going to maintain?
Yes, absolutely. The Phase Three field project at the high school will not be impacted by any new construction for a high school. It will be fine.
Yeah, a couple things. One comment. And what I found interesting in talking about the charter schools is when I look at of the trajectory of need during those, the doldrum days of state aid, they continuously got more while we were flat. Just a comment, just an observation, and the fact that I do share with Dr. Valeski his feelings on this. It should be in parity, and I think we should look into ways to influence legislation on this, because it would simply be fair. That's the comment. The comment, I, you know, as being in finance for almost a quarter century now, I've never sat through a budget like this. So hats off. Most of these budget meetings come with expletives and sadness. And I experienced none of those. So, so to the team and all those that were involved with this, on behalf of myself and those who trust my opinion on these things, outstanding job. And thank you. Thank you very much.
See, we're keeping it happy tonight. Okay. No more questions. We have a public hearing regarding the Board of Education of the Town of East Brunswick and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey refunding of all or a portion of its outstanding refunding school bonds dated November 20th, 2012.
Yes, so this is another refunding opportunity or refinancing opportunity on school bonds, which are projected to bring additional savings in our debt payment. And so in order to move forward with this, we are required by law to have a public hearing for comment. And this is the opportunity for anyone on this particular issue to remark.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on just this issue alone? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do I need to take any action, or just, that's it?
Nope.
Okay, that was easy. Okay, that brings us, staying with the public, to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment in educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. A participant is limited to three minutes' duration. Elapsed time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the board secretary. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to the board? Come on down. Are you going to sing for us?
I was part of the choir for many years.
Well, there you go. So if you could state your name and address for the public, and then please absolutely feel free to sing your, your... I won't hold you to that, though. You may sing your remarks, or you may speak.
I am not going to break up this wonderful cadre of wonderful people at this moment to break down and sing. I'm out of practice at the moment. So my name's Alexander Spielman. I am from Six Duckos Road, East Brunswick. I have a general concern about, you know, I know there's been conversations about eventually building a new high school in the near, in the near future. And I was noticing that in the, in the, what's it called? Agenda, thank you. In the agenda, they were talking about renaming Hammershold to Upper Elementary and bringing it from where it was, which was six and seven, to five and six. And my general concern is how that's going to affect Churchill. Because with, I believe, right now, it is eight and nine. And I knew that they were trying to make that into a full four-year high school at the end of this. So my general concern is, is there going to be a crowding situation when it comes to the upper grades, when it comes to seven, eight, nine, 10, you know, into that period of time? Because at this moment, while we're moving kids into Hammershold, there is still no final plan as to how everything's going to be done for the upper grades, such as the high school. I mean, we haven't, we haven't even had anything, like, solid at this moment. So I'm not sure if there's, if that's going to create an imbalance when it comes to things. I know that, I saw that fantastic number for the children when it comes to children, the staff ratios in the lower grades. But I'm not, I'm concerned about how that may adversely affect that in the, on the upper grades. And I'm just, I have a raised concern about that.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Just so you are aware, this evening is your time to speak with us. So we don't answer the questions to the public. It's not a back and forth. But what I would suggest is, if you want to make sure that Janet has, Janet or Karen have your information, then perhaps they can get you the specifics. I will rest assured, there are more plans, and they would be happy to share them with you.
Thank you.
But I truly appreciate your confidence this evening.
Thank you. One last thing, which was, we were talking about luck of the Irish, and that brought me back to when I was in high school, and when we had Mr. Murphy as the principal at the time. And St. Patrick's Day was one of his favorite holidays. He would always dress up for that.
See, Dr. Vanelle? I hope that you enjoyed it as much as Bob Murphy did.
You got called out tonight.
Right?
Not only tonight.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the public? Councilwoman Doctors and Bicky, who is dressed in green as well. See, there's a theme this evening. See, there's a theme this evening.
All right. And sticking with the theme, I am here to sing tonight, but the praises of one of our groups, and that's the Child Nutrition Group. Tonight, you hopefully are going to approve their bonus or their stipend. They worked so hard over this pandemic. They've served more meals. These ladies were carrying gallons of milk and loading them into people's trunks of their cars. It, they, they just did a fabulous job, and it just makes me so happy that they are going to see this bonus because most of them are making minimum wage. So this is great, and I thank you, and I hope we continue to do this every year for them. So thank you, and thanks to our wonderful child nutrition staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else out there wants to come on down? Seeing none, I will close the public portion. And that brings us to our agenda items. Before I ask for a motion to combine items one through six of our Board of Education items, is there anything that needs separating? Seeing none, may I please have a motion for Board of Education items?
So moved.
So moved, Mark?
Second.
Corangelo, second by Leewoo. Is there any discussion?
Is it a quick question?
Yes.
I didn't see the minutes on here of approval. Does that have to abstain for the last minute? March third minutes?
They're number four.
They're on page five.
Page, page five? Okay, I just wanted to know when I had to abstain.
Yeah, it's going to be a roll call, so you can just, um.
Thanks.
It's number four.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Oh, you said it's on page five.
Yeah, where, this is on.
Except for number four. Except for number four, Mark.
I don't have page numbers.
Except for number four, I want to abstain.
Thank you. Mrs. Gwos?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs., Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lax?
Yes, motion carries. There's one item tonight for curriculum instruction. May I please have a motion? Motion by Mark, second by Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Bring us to facilities. We do have two items. Is there anything that needs separating out this evening?
Number two, please.
Number two, okay, we'll take them one at a time then. May I please have a motion for item number one?
So moved.
Second.
Leewoo, Mark, any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Number two, may I please have a motion for item number two on the facilities agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Jeff?
Second.
Second by Heather. Mark, I'm going to assume you would like to start discussion this evening?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead.
I understand the explanation of where this came from. I don't understand the need. And anytime that I see we're going to spend thousands of dollars, I'd like to know the need to change it, just to call it an upper elementary instead of a middle.
If I could, Mr. Sizmar, the, it's a good point. The, traditionally, a middle school model would have included, could have included grade six, seven, and eight. But the vision of the district is that, as this being the upper elementary, this will stay a five, six building, even after the removal of TCU's at Churchill. Churchill would be recommended to become Churchill Middle School instead of Churchill Junior High School at some point in the future because it would now house seven, grade seven and eight, if we had a comprehensive high school. So that was the reason for the upper elementary at Hammershold Middle School at Churchill and eliminate the junior high school nomenclature. And this is for the longer term.
Okay, I understand it, but again, bear with me for a minute. I would not even see the need in the future to change the name of Churchill to, to a middle school. I mean, to me, this is my opinion, you know, thousands of dollars now, thousands of dollars in the future, just to change the designation of a school, unless it's something that's not proper in the state, which I haven't found anything in my research.
No.
To have eight elementary schools, Hammershold Middle School, keep it, no matter what the grades are, Churchill Junior High School, still falls in the parameters of what a junior high school could be defined as up until eighth grade, if we went through nine to twelve school. My personal opinion, just money spent, and I, I see no need for it, that's all.
One of the things, too, that I just wanted to let the board know is, is part of the discussion with the community was the optics of the change that we were making. We were creating an upper elementary school experience. Many, many families did ask us, are this, are the, are the sixth graders and fifth graders going to be treated as middle schoolers, or are they going to be treated as upper elementary? And we always responded that we were going to treat them as upper elementary students. So that was part of the sales job for part of the, the, you know, informing the parents, too. I just want to make the board aware of that.
Jeff, and then Heather.
What, what, I don't, define that. What does it mean to be treated like a middle schooler? I, I, those are the words you used. I don't understand what that means.
Parents, that was the question the parents raised to us. Are they going to be treated like middle schoolers? In other words, are they going to be left with all this responsibility? Are they going to move to the school and then be saying, and now you have to be independent? Which was part of our typical middle school transition. And this board, not necessarily the composition of this board, but this Board of Education years past, had discussed the transition from elementary school to Hammershold as being one of the bigger hurdles in a child's experience in East Brunswick. And so part of the rationale for this upper middle school experience is by taking the fifth grade up this level.
Upper elementary.
Yeah, upper, upper, I'm sorry, taking the fifth grade to upper elementary, that we create this, this more, a softer transition from this K-four elementary school into this upper elementary school, and then into middle school at Churchill, and then on to a comprehensive high school. The, the actual proposal for renaming came out of this, the, the long-term vision of seeing a comprehensive nine through twelve high school on the campus, and then re, renaming the buildings in respect of their composition. So that's the reason it was on the agenda for tonight.
Heather, did you have a?
Oh, I just, I just wanted to add that I've, I've talked to a lot of parents in the community, and the concern was very real about if Hammershold was going to maintain the middle school model, just with younger grades, or if it was going to carry on what they had hoped their children would experience in the fifth grade, in their, you know, local elementary schools. And they seemed relieved to know that the elementary expectations, the smallness of elementary school, even in a large building, would be maintained. Some of the hallmarks of being a fifth grader would stay the same. And I think the renaming becomes important in that way because I think in, at least in the education community, middle school denotes a very specific kind of model, like this is how we educate the children, which is different than the elementary schools, and not just in expectations, but I would, I would assume in the moving of classes, it's, it's a larger world for them when you're in a middle school model. That was just my only comment.
I get all that, but we're still going to treat the fifth graders as fifth graders. Because going by that logic, then we're saying we're downgrading sixth graders back to elementary school. It's a name. I don't, I don't see the difference. It gives them much more opportunities for the fifth graders. In fact, they're going to have more exposure to foreign languages. They're all going to be mixed together, which is a wonderful experience. Working at Hammershold for five years, you know, whether they come in as fourth graders or fifth graders, it's wonderful to see the kids come together. Again, to me, I don't want to go all night on it, but it's just, it's spending money just to change a name. Whether we treat them as fifth graders, whatever, changing names is inconsequential to how we're going to treat them. We're going to treat them excellent, like they do in every grade, one through twelve. So like I said, my opinion is just, we're going to treat them special. It's, my opinion, a waste of money to be changing the secondary names of the schools.
Yeah, title to that. And actually, if you remember, when we went to elementary here, back when the, the four of us were, were there, it was in sixth grade. So elementary was sixth grade.
And then we went to a junior high. It wasn't no school.
And then we went to, no. So it's, it's.
It never existed.
It's an interesting thing because you're also used to, it's hard to, it's hard to be the, the beginning of change. And I, I understand where you're coming from, and I certainly understand your concern about the, the financial.
Why would it be middle school, seventh and eighth, instead of junior high?
Because that's the true middle school, I believe, is sixth through eighth.
Junior high, seventh.
Right, right. Middle school as.
Junior high, seventh and eighth. I don't know about you.
Well, it was actually seventy-nine when we went.
I know, I'm just saying, but it's going to be seventh and eighth. So to me, that's junior high. It's not, you know.
But middle school, I think the athletics, I think there's a middle school athletics correct, the seventh and eighth, so you'll be more consistent. That's just my.
The state recognizes seven, eighth is middle school grades.
Right.
And six.
And six, six through eight, yeah.
That's what I said, that's what I'm saying, it's splitting here.
It is.
It's always tough because there's no one, I mean, look, we've been a ten year, ten, a ten through twelve high school for as long as we've been here. And, you know, you go outside of East Brunswick to a lot of places, and they think you're crazy that you're coming into high school in just the tenth grade. So I, but I appreciate your concern. Does anyone else have any?
Yeah, Laurie, you've actually made a good point. When we were K through six here in the district for a long time, then we pushed the sixth graders up to middle school. They went into a school that was a new school, they called it middle school, and they were okay. They actually, they got educated, they had a sixth grade experience, actually quite an enhanced one based on the facility that they were now in, which would, I agree with you, Laurie, I mean, it would be the same thing here, where we're moving these two grades into an, a much better facility in which they're coming from in terms of resources and, and space. I think it's a middle school. I think it is a change. I understand the parents' perception, but I, I also think that there's, there's a reasonable case to be made that it should be treated differently. This is, sounds more opportunistic than it does the punishment. It, it's a middle school. It is a middle school. I, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Sizmar. You know, the cost aside, which, you know, for me is difficult to say, I'm not actually counting that as a factor, but I will say optically, they're, they're walking into a brand-new house, a brand-new facility that is not an elementary school. It's better, and it's added, and they're going to have those great experiences. To Mr. Sizmar's point, they're going to have an excellent experience in any grade. So I appreciate the comments. At this point, I, I would have to agree.
Thank you. Any?
Can I just, I just have a question?
Absolutely.
I have a question. Then since, since the point being raised is there's a cost, I'm just curious, what is the cost?
The only cost would be the change in the name on the school, the physical name of the school.
Okay.
Modifying the, the name on the physical structure.
Okay.
And of course, going for it, we would change the letterhead, and we would change the website and things like that that we can do all internally.
So that's all in-house?
Right.
And you're not going to throw away paper to just use it up?
No, no.
Um, you know, so, so it's interesting discussion, and, and, you know, I, I guess it boils down to a communications question, right? So this is about communicating what the school is about, and, you know, your recommendation to change it is based on feedback you've gotten from parents? So, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to balance what I've heard here, which is really good discussion, and really good points raised by, by Mark. So I'm just trying to understand, you know, how strongly do you feel about the need for the name change to support the parents' comfort level? Because that's an important consideration, too.
Right, right. I, I feel strongly about it, and I understand the position of the board, but I do feel strongly about it, and that's why it was recommended on the agenda. I was at the, the moving up ceremony, or the moving up at Hammershold. Dr. Gaskell did present that night in four different sessions about Hammershold Upper Elementary School, and that was used during the entire time for all the audience members. We never used the, the title middle school, but parents there were coming wanting to hear how this middle, or how this elementary experience was going to continue for their children. Because some parents felt very strongly that their children, part of this transition to middle school was difficult for them because they weren't ready to be in middle school at sixth grade, that there was something causing this transitional block. And we discovered over years of research that there were some issues in fifth grade with, that contributed to that, and there were some issues in sixth grade that contributed to that. So this, this transition to six, or fifth, six at Hammershold, we thought would present the opportunity to say, we're going to elongate the elementary experience, allowing students to take electives, to explore different things, but continue the social, emotional growth, which is really important now. We've continued to hear that now, at this time in our recovery from the pandemic, and students are still coming out of this environment, having been home, having been remote, and now re-acclimating this entire school year to what a school experience is. And that includes behavior, it includes discipline, it includes respect for each other, respect for the teachers, before learning can even start. So that, that's why the recommendation was on there, because the title recommend, is representative of what the school is intended to be, an upper elementary school.
And Dr. Valeski, if I could just add, the work we're doing in scheduling the building is aligned with an elementary model in regards to the, the fifth grade, how it is currently, switching with just the two teachers. That's the model that we're planning for, and even the logistics, the teachers walking their class down to their lunch period and so forth. It's, it's, the way the school's going to function is going to be aligned with an elementary model, more than a middle school where the bell rings and you're on your own to find your next class.
Follow up?
Go ahead.
The gentleman.
I echo what Dr. Valeski is saying. A lot of parents had a lot of concerns about the idea of the middle school. I'm sure they will get a lot of quality instruction, new opportunities, and, but at the same time, let's give them time to be kids. I mean, they're coming out of the, now it's only going to be K to four in the elementary school. So you're talking about fifth graders who need the time to transition, like Dr. Valeski said, and like Dr. Bowley said, they're coming out of a pandemic. The social advancement for the last two years has been reduced. They're, they're not able to, you know, the kids need time to be the age that they, you know, the social interaction wasn't there, so they need the time to do that. So upper elementary, if you're walking them to class, if you're helping them to lunch, that is a little different than what middle school connotes, right? You're, you're, you're going to different parts of the building on your own, you're expected to have certain responsibilities that you don't have in an elementary school. So I think it's a nice, it's used in a lot of districts, upper elementary. I, I definitely respect the other point of view because Hammershold is an excellent institution, offers a lot of opportunities, but in, in, in relation to showing people and parents and making them feel comfortable, and also really just saying what it is. Let's say what it is. It's an upper elementary school. So that's just my thoughts on that. Thank you.
And it's interesting, you know, for, for the board members, and I agree that it's a parent thing right now, and this is what the parents are perceiving and what they, I'd like to see that actually more scientific. Before we pass or vote on this, I think you're right. I think it is the elementary school parents who have the lattice voice, stakeholder voice in this thing. I'd like to see it put to the website. I'd like to hear feedback on, on a larger scale than just those who are communicating with you to, to the point that they're making. And when the results come back, I mean, some things, some things are legislated and some things are voted on, you know, and I think this is a, a very specific target group. I'd like to see more public input through vote.
Just a quick question, because throughout all the presentations, as you said, this has been presented as Hammershold Upper Elementary School. Have you had any parents coming back with any negative feedback on that?
No.
I, I appreciate what you're saying. I just, I've talked to several parents, and I understood their concerns, but I didn't think that the naming was really aimed at meeting the parents' concerns. was really aimed at meeting the parents' concerns. I thought the naming was aimed at accuracy for what it educationally is. It's like a Montessori preschool is a specific kind of school.
It's a preschool.
A charter's, Montessori teaching, though, is a different kind of teaching. A charter school is a different kind of school. Um, and a middle school is different than an elementary, and where we're gonna be with this five, six is an upper elementary model. I mean, each thing has a model. I-
Maybe. Yeah, you may be right. I'm, I'm not disputing whether you're right or wrong. I'm saying that this particular decision has been stated as the foundation for every comment up here is, and you just said it, parents have come to me. What parents? How many parents? Was it a fair sampling of the parents? Do we have a, a majority of the parents reporting? Have you created a baseline? We really haven't. Those who have contacted any of you, parents have come to me. I'm not disputing, it may be the best idea in the world to change this name. I just don't think, in this particular case, the target audience is a K through six. I'm more comfortable just asking the parents.
Give yourself a little bit more credit, though, Jeff, because remember that the nine of us here were elected by the township to make these decisions.
Without a doubt.
I understand what you're saying.
Listen, plenty of things go to vote, even on, uh, on a national level. Those are those little questions at the end where it's put back to the public. That's the purpose, that's the purpose of governance and democracy. And sometimes it makes more sense for the public to make that decision if it's a certain set of stakeholders that are making it. It happens all the time in government. It's an important part of democracy. And then this is one of those items, when you're dealing with a subset of people, to give them an opportunity to have a representation and a fair sampling is much better legislated by, by, uh, not by us, but in this particular case. And I do give myself a lot of credit and know when to punt. And, and in this particular case, this is a punt.
Gotcha. Let me, okay, Mark and then Heather, I believe, have comments?
Yeah, I, I mean, a good point came up tonight. So we're going to have sixth graders walked to lunch as a class. So we're actually changing the sixth grade experience, moving it back to an elementary experience. So it's not that only then the fifth graders are uncomfortable coming to this school. We're pushing the sixth grade, I'll call it development, if, if that's the proper word here, to make them go back to, to, to being walked around as they were in elementary schools. Working in most of the elementary schools here, seeing for over fifty years the sixth graders, they figured it out. And they had, they had a fantastic time maturing. So, I mean, if, if that's what's gonna happen, then I guess it is an elementary school. I was misunderstanding that. I thought it was for the fifth graders to feel more comfortable, but now we're gonna take the sixth graders and we're gonna, as, as I said, we're pushing them back to an elementary school model. This is the first I'm hearing about this. I, I heard about the name change, but, um,
Supervision in the hallways.
Then we're, then we're, so everything's gonna be, like I said, everything's gonna be walked around. They go, unless the scheduling change, I mean, I thought they went to different, with their specials and stuff. So the teacher's gonna, I, I don't wanna get into the whole, into the weeds on the whole thing, but it's just, I, I didn't know we were gonna start treating our, our sixth graders as if they were back in elementary school.
You need to get into the weeds, though. That's-
Yeah, I mean, it's just, they, they, yeah, they go to different places. They go, somebody, they go to different languages. They go, I, I just, I, I don't see it working. Um, being, being in the school, I don't see it working, making the sixth graders now as if they went back to elementary school. We're going backwards with their development. And these kids, they're much more mature than I was in fifth and sixth grade in East Brunswick school system. Um, I have faith in our kids. I think the fifth graders can handle it, going to a middle school model. Hundred percent. This, this is change, this isn't just the name, this is changing a whole, uh, the way we're treating our kids.
Cultural change.
All right, well, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, if I could, so, I, I just, for the entire board, I think some good points have been raised, but we did have conversations and Dr. Bowley did give a presentation about the actual scheduling model, uh, for the school. Uh, and the rationale is to take, we aren't trying to take the sixth graders back all that far, but we're trying to pull it back a notch, a little bit, to allow them more time to assimilate, uh, and not feel this pressure. What we, what we found from the Hammershold experience is the sixth grade, there was enormous stress among groups of students about what they were responsible for at Hammershold, having left this very supportive elementary experience. Uh, and part of that is just the culture of what the middle school expected the students to do. Within a couple of weeks, you're expected to know your way around the building, to navigate your locker, to understand what the cell phone usage rules are, and, and how to interact with your teachers. And, and by the way, now you're moving from the elementary model to a house model at Hammershold. And so the, the actual revisioning of this was meant to just give our sixth graders just a little bit more time for maturity. And if they have, they can develop that, and as we see that beginning to change, we can make adjustments in the, the daily activities of students as we go into the future. But this also allowed those students to have better experiences at a different school as a five, six component. So this is gonna be better experiences for students, um, but we're just giving them elongated periods of time for that maturity and getting ready for now the seven, eight, nine push to Churchill, which hopefully, in not so distant future, will only be a seven, eight school, um, and, and what I hope to be, you know, envisioned someday in East Brunswick, if we can get a comprehensive high school constructed. So that was the rationale. It was just to, just to pull it back a half a notch to allow this transition to be more seamless and not so, not such a, a jump for so many students.
And that was in a lot of, same reason a lot of parents.
Mm-hmm.
That was, that was-
Heather and then Mark.
I was gonna say, you guys had a statistic, that, that's something Jeff would have said, about the parents, you know, that, that, you know.
That's for years, but that's for years. I mean, we could look it up, but that was, we had, we had people come down and do all kinds of discussions and we can even look it up.
But that was documented, that's, where do we see that?
This was actually often strategic planning, uh, process we did with, with posted notes that were recorded all over, uh,
That's right.
The Hammershold cafeteria.
Karen and Janet logged thousands of notes, posted notes.
Thousands? There was.
Oh, yes, thousands.
Thousands.
She's not too charged already.
Literally thousands.
Yes, there was. Heather, you've been so patient, Heather.
Well, I wanted to answer a question that Jeff asked, and then I wanted to ask my own question. Um, when I've spoken to parents, no parent has asked about the name of the school. No parent.
How many parents?
How many parents?
How many parents have you spoke to? That's my point. Heather, I'm sure they spoke to you, I know, but how many?
Probably thirty-five. But the question was not about the name. No one has expressed any concern about the name. The question has been about the model. What's going to happen to the fifth graders in the model, because educationally, the model is different. My question, though, was for Dr. Bowley, the fifth graders that are moving up, they will be having the transition of moving to being integrated with kids from all over town still, right? Because I think that that's where the upper elementary part comes in. We're still providing the supports of an elementary school, the smallness, um, I want to, not intimacy, but that small family atmosphere that fifth graders and sixth graders can benefit from. But they're still having that integration with the full town. You're no longer just with your neighborhood, it's everyone from town, so it's still a huge transition, I think.
It is. It's actually a nice thing, coming from the perspective that when I, um, got to tenth grade, for us, there was the first time I met half the town. I went to my reunion a few years ago, and I met people from my graduating class. So there is something really nice when you think about these kids, if they're starting at such a young age and getting to make those relationships earlier, um, and go through that together, the whole transition, it's a really nice, um, it's a benefit I wish I had back then, but-
Sounds kinda like a middle school, what you're describing. I, uh, point of, uh, thank you.
You're welcome, Jeff.
Matt, point of order on this, uh, can I introduce a motion to table this, uh, for further discussion at this point, or do we need to?
So the way a motion to table works is you've had a motion and a second discussion. If somebody does a motion to table, it has to be seconded. The motion to table is voted on first. If that fails, then you go to the, the first motion, which was the motion second.
Thank you very much. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to table this. I might prepare to vote on it tonight. I'd like to have more.
Okay, Jeff says the motions are second. Levo? Um, so we don't need to discuss anymore? Is this just a roll call motion?
It's a roll call, it's a roll call of, of the motion to table.
It's a motion-
Actually, a voice vote. No?
Nurse table, I do a, a roll call.
Okay.
Okay. Will secretary discuss the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Table. Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos?
No.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
No.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lax?
No.
Uh, the motion is tabled.
Okay, motion is tabled. Can we move on to financial services?
Yes.
Should we add a later date? Okay. Um, we have ten items this evening. Is there anything that needs separating out of financial services? Seeing none, may I please have a motion for items one through ten?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Winston.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lax.
Yes, motion carries. We have two items this evening on our human resources agenda. Anyone need anything separated out? No, then may I please have a motion for items one and two? Moved by Mark. Second by Jeff. Any discussion? Uh, this is also a roll call vote, so secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lax.
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for the one item on staff development this evening? Don't all jump. Thank you, Jeff. Second by Barbara. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, anything that needs separating out from our student services items this evening? No? Then may I please have a motion for items one through eight on student services? Quiet group tonight.
Oh, some of them reading stuff.
No one wants to get to the cookies I made?
Yeah.
I, 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 motion by Jeff was second. Second by Mark. Thank you, Mark. Any discussion?
Cookies, no.
And Irish potatoes, Irish potatoes.
Can I ask, can I ask a question about number one without separating? Um, I wanted to note this one sentence here. Accordingly, the general education inclusion half-day program fee requires adjustment as it is the same rate assessed for the early learning academy half-day program? I'm, I was confused as to what that meant. Are we adjusting it to match it, or are we adjusting it to change it?
Mr. Crouchfeld? Would you move ahead?
Come on down. Don't worry, you'll get a cookie for this.
Could've snuck out.
Um, yeah. So the Gen Ed program, we charge the same amount as we charge for ELA. Um, it's only for the, uh, regular education kids that attend the half-day program. So it's just in uniform of the half-day, it's the same amount of time, uh, they're learning the district curriculum, it's a optional program, um, you know, parents.
The adjustment was, it wasn't the same before? That's what I'm asking, is what's the change?
Um, we changed the, the board approves the, uh, half-day rate for ELA, which is a community programs fee. We do that first, and then the Gen Ed fee follows.
Thank you.
So it's just a timing thing.
That's what I said, thank you, I appreciate it.
Sorry, I should've said that first.
Any other discussion? Okay, well, the secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lax.
Yes, motion carries. This brings us to new and our old business, committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. Jeff?
Yeah, new business, uh, and I, Matt, again, point of order. I don't know if a motion could or should be made under new business, or if this would just be for exploratory. Based on what was tabled tonight, I'd like to use the opportunity while this is being considered, and if it's a motion, so be it. Where I, a survey is put onto our website, it is, uh, it is promoted on our, on our social media pages that this survey is out there, or whatever means appropriate to get the best sampling before we make this decision that was tabled this evening. I don't know, Matt, if that comes in form of motion under new business or not, uh-
I, you can definitely do this, a motion under new business. Yeah, and it would just be a voice, a voice vote, uh, and it would just permit Dr. Velusky to put this up as a, a survey question.
Survey question, nothing more than to gather data, so we can then revisit it as a group, since it is a tabled item.
Specifically for the renaming only.
For the renaming only, just, uh, get, you know, with, even with what we do know to be, uh, based on Dr. Bowley's explanation of what this, uh, cultural structure will be, an explanation about what it is, just so we could just, I'd like to get more feedback beyond just the sampling we've received so we can have a reasonable conversation with some facts going forward. I, I would make that motion.
Second.
Just be, it's just a voice vote, all in favor?
All in favor?
No discussion?
Oh, is there discussion on this?
Yeah, discussion.
Yeah, no, I'm, so there was a strategic plan done, and so putting it on hold, what I thought we could do was just go back to the data we had and pull it back out for the folks who weren't there at the time. I wasn't thinking there was a need to go, you know, get more data. We had a lot of data supporting, uh, the concerns about, um, the middle school model. So, you know, take some time to get that data and share it.
Either, actually, the, the survey would be a faster result, um, because we can post that and have results probably tabulated within days. Um, so that, that, there, it's, it's expeditious. It would represent the community that currently resides in East Brunswick, the students that would go there.
It's another data source. I think-
We can also look at the other data.
Years ago, there was a lot, it was a lot, a lot of concern, but I wanted to respect the fact that the current board composition hadn't seen that and didn't participate in that, and that was out of respect for, you know, the folks that weren't aware of it. But there was a lot of feedback on that issue. So I wouldn't disregard it because we didn't fix it. You know, we didn't fix it. If we do a survey now, it, it was a lot of effort. We, we did in-person, posted notes, people came in, they, they gave extra feed, I mean, it was a comprehensive strategic effort. So we can do a survey, I think that would be supplemental, and if it's easy enough to do, let's do it. But I, I definitely wanna make sure we, um, leverage the, the prior data.
Absolutely, because the, 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 um, strategic planning, uh, process yielded qualitative data. There were comments there.
A lot of data.
And the, and the survey would be the quantitative data, that this is by the numbers, how do people feel? And we can look at, we can look at both.
It's different, right?
Right.
Uh, 'cause I wanted to emphasize how much effort in those that tabulated the data and the, the days of, you know, people coming in and the posted notes and the discussions, um, it was, it was the most comprehensive strategic planning effort we've done. And perhaps we should do it again, you know? Coming back from pandemic, the, the world has changed. I do support the name change, but I voted out of, you know, respect for, let's get the data. You know, I think that was a fair request.
And, and it's, it's true, we did do a tremendous amount of work, or you did a tremendous amount of work. Um, but I will say this, to, to Jeff's point and to Heather's, one thing is, I don't know how many of the board members were on the board at the time. It was a long time ago, um, so you're right, that probably were, were coming due, and we should stock up on posted. Um, because it probably is something that could be done again, but I, I do, I do, um, have concerns about the fact that some of that data was a very different elementary population, because the people that were in elementary back then, those kids are, um, about to leave the district at this point.
Yeah.
And graduating. So it's a very new elementary population that's coming in and is going to be impacted by the structural change.
There's, there's a lot that's changed. We've been through the pandemic. I would say, though, the concern at the time was the transition to, to the, uh, what is it called? The middle?
Upper elementary school.
The middle school, whatever it was, right? Whatever it's called now, I'm all confused. The, the, there was a lot of concern about that. I would say the pandemic probably, you know, set, made it worse. So if anything, I would expect it to, to be an even bigger concern now than it was then. But, you know, we are, and, and I think there was another point of, we are elected to represent the public, but it's, it's great when we can get out there and hear from the public the way that we did. Um, as, as I said, it was, it was a huge undertaking, it was a lot of work, and I think the people that tabulated are probably like, no, no, don't do this again. Because it was, I know it was a lot of work. Um, but we paid attention to it, and we built superintendent plans based on that for, for several years after, after that.
Yep.
And, and it really guided our decision-making. So, you know, as I said, I, I do support the, the concept of the name change because of the feedback we've gotten in the sense that the pandemic has set us back, not forward, with regard to children needing just a little more care, you know, I think little more, a little more care to make sure that they, they move on into middle and high school, you know, well-prepared and not, not being scared of being thrown into something that, you know, they're not ready for. But, um, data is good, so, you know, I, I would really defer to, you know, Dr. Velusky to propose what is the best way to get, to get that data.
We'll gather the data. We'll, we'll get a comprehensive, uh, scorecard for the board.
And then we're voting, so, right? Um, all in favor? Opposed?
Yes, uh, so, uh, Dr. Velusky and President Lax. So is there any way you can circulate that data among our board members so we can study? Uh, additional to the survey we're going to do, that will help us to make better decision.
So, Mr. Hong, are you asking to, to the survey results?
Yes.
Yes, as soon as we have them, we would put them out to the board.
Uh, strategic planning, uh, data.
Oh, this, oh, yes, yes.
Strategic planning.
Yes.
Who wasn't on the board back then?
What year was it?
Most.
Uh, two thousand fifteen, I believe.
I had just come on, so I think-
Oh, so then, so then you only have four sitting board members, yeah, so that's-
Seven-year-old data is.
Well, that's what I was saying.
Ancient history.
It may be worth re- recreating then, to-
Yeah, I think I see too, but it's ancient history.
That's why I said that a lot of people are-
Let's use it as a reference. At the same time, we do the online survey, so we can, that will help us make better decision.
I'll take out my binder for you, Levo.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Well, she says, thank you. Anything else? All do good of the cause, yes?
Yep. Uh, we had a beautiful-
We had a beautiful curricular committee meeting Monday. I really appreciate Dr. Bowley and her team. After a long day, we still have twenty-four teachers join that meeting and we approved the new class fashion two and three. And I have been the advocate to utilize our community resource, just like Victor just presented at the very beginning. We can invite outside people coming. At that meeting, I told Annie, I said, "Let's get some fashion expert from New York, from somewhere to our class. That will inspire our students' idea." So the curricular committee meeting is wonderful. I love it. So I always encourage more teachers join that committee because the teachers, they are teaching the students, they have firsthand knowledge about the teaching. Way as the board member, I want, at least for me, I want to know more from the teachers. I want to learn from the teachers. That will help me make better decision. So I have been talking to Dr. Bowley to have more teachers into that committee. But anyway, I really appreciate their effort coming to the meeting after a long day. The meeting is beautiful. Thank you, Dr. Bowley and your team.
Some of this was said before tonight about the budget and all that. And I know the pandemic, you know, it's not over. We get it. It could resurface at any time. But I'm so proud of the employees of this district, from the teachers, staff. I'd have to name everybody. This is like the cherry on top of the sundae here. I mean, we're coming out of two years of, I won't say the word, but it was terrible times and everything else. And, you know, we're not in a hole. I see tax decrease on here. I don't know how it's done. I mean, other than, you know, Joe, I'm going to steal from you with the "we", you know, not meaning "we-us", we meaning all the folks out there in the district. It's insane to come out of two years like that and be sitting where East Brunswick School District is. So, wasn't said the most eloquently, but it is said from my heart. I mean, it's amazing where we're sitting at today. And I'm darn proud to be, you know, raised in this, go through this school district and be sitting here today saying, "Excellent job." So, to everybody, please, excellent job. Thank you.
Well said. To Adana?
Just a small comment to add to that is, actually, I remember when the pandemic started and the emergency finance committee meetings we were holding and the emergency weekly meetings we were holding, and really, really worried about being able to pay the bills. And, you know, what would happen, what if, what if, what if? And the point here is that it's that foresight in the planning and even the years before, the foresight of holding the reserve from some of those community programs and the PAC and having those reserves to rely on, you know, is part of what, you know, kept things afloat. So, you know, when we look back at all those, you know, what-if meetings and we didn't have to kind of, you know, there was no crashing and burning, there was no craziness that happened. But it is that extra time putting, putting into thinking ahead and planning, I think that really positioned us well for the last two years. So, thank you.
We have the best finance people in the business, don't we? Starting here. So I just wanted to say, thank you for indulging me, but you're welcome for indulging me because having the kids back, what a breath of fresh air. And I know I love the little ones because they're enthusiastic, they're adorable. But I have to tell you, and I have to go back and see the show again, and this didn't do justice, my favorite part was seeing kids here again. And I've been seeing some of the emails and things that are going out of the schools. There's Candy Bingo, there's picture days are back and book fairs are back and all these different activities. And I know, and of course, some of us, you know, mask-free, I have to say it's much easier to run a meeting without them. You know, it really is starting to kind of give us some normalcy and not to be too, you know. I understand what Mark is saying, you know, who knows when we're going to be finally through. But just having the kids have a little bit of normalcy in our staff and for child nutrition, as Doctors Mickey mentioned, you know, it's true, you never thought about how many extra meals that they were serving because it was everyone, so your staff, your students.
Phenomenal.
This district.
Phenomenal.
But going back to Joe, we do have a pretty good board event, I have to say. We may disagree at times, but I think that this is a really great, caring bunch. And I think it also says something, and I'm sorry for the rest of you, but I'm going to be a little... It does say something about the fact that you have four graduates of this high school sitting at this dais. I think the fact that we're back in town says something. We raise our children here and that we are here and we are representing the township, so...[1604.21]